Hello, I'm Samantha Smiley and I'm the State Education Reporter for Chalkbeat Chicago. Welcome to our inaugural School Board Candidate Forums. These are conversations with the people running in Chicago's historic first school board elections. And welcome to everyone tuning in live at our YouTube channel. If you have any questions for the candidates, well, for our one candidate today, please type them into the comments and we will do our best to get to them. So now I am happy to introduce our candidate from District 8. This is Angel Gutierrez. He is a resident of Garfield Ridge. He currently works as a nonprofit consultant and has worked for large nonprofit organizations like the Catholic Charities of the Archdiocese of Chicago and Chicago Hope Academy High School. How are you doing today?
I am doing well. Thank you guys for hosting.
Okay. So for our first question for today is what was your favorite and least favorite subject in school?
I think my favorite subject was math always. I learned at a young age, my dad who had a third grade education, but it was self-taught. And he would always drill me on addition and subtraction and multiplication. And I carried that on through high school. So math and numbers are things that I love because numbers often tell the story. You know, whether it's budgets, whether you're fundraising, whether you're trying to balance your house budget, you're trying to purchase something, right? Those numbers are really important. And probably my least favorite subject was probably any class that I had at 8:10 in the morning. Just because I lived maybe nine blocks from school and I was often tardy. So trying to run into the school, to your locker room, to get all those things ready is just sometimes hard.
Yeah, I understand. So now for like our first section of questions, I'm going to ask you a ton of yes or no questions. And then I'm going to give you some time to explain. This is your reaction to the news. And there's been a lot of news in Chicago. So yes or no, would you keep Pedro Martinez in the role of CEO for CPS?
Yes.
Yes or no, do you support taking out a high interest loan to cover operating costs?
No.
In 30 seconds, can you explain why or why not?
You know, I think that on the loan, right? All we're doing is really kicking the can down the road. And we've done that, I think, too often. And we need to come up with a sustainable plan for solving, you know, this crisis. I mean, if you add the deficit that currently plus whatever gets negotiated in the new contract, I mean, we could be facing a billion dollars at the end of this year. A billion dollars, and that's a lot of money. And for Pedro, I think that he's done a fairly good job in terms of helping stabilize the system. Right? I think if you look at the last 10 years, it's the CEO's role and the superintendent's role has been a revolving door. And at this particular moment in time, we need to have some stability at the school system. And I think that he deserves to finish out his contract.
So for CPS leadership, one of the things the Chicago Board does is hire and evaluate a CEO. What qualities or experience would you like to see the CEO of CPS have?
So I think one, one who is data-driven, right? Making sure that we have key indicators of performance, right? So how do we improve that 31% of students reading and 19% in math, right? How do we do that, right? Those are the type of metrics that I want our superintendent, CEO focused on, laser-focused. I want someone who understands relationships, you know, relationships up and down, right? How to have, how you deal with the public, how you deal with parents, how you deal with students, how you deal with teachers, right? And the community. I want someone who understands that when you come to a city like Chicago, you have to be politically savvy, right? Because we are 77 different communities and we have 77 different voices, right? That are coming in. You have to be able to be flexible and nimble in your decision-making and you have to be a good listener. And I think the other piece that's become very apparent over the course of the last several months is, right? I want a leader who is transparent, right? I want a leader who is, tells me that they're going to do something and then do it.
Thank you. So now this section of questions is all about the budget. So as a numbers person, I feel like you probably have a lot of good answers for this. In its most recent budget, Chicago Public Schools projected a $500 million deficit every year for the next five years. That's excluding any costs related to teacher or pension contracts that are currently being negotiated. How would you balance Chicago Public Schools' nearly $10 billion budget?
I think you want to first see and look at where that $10 billion is being allocated, right? How much is actually going into the classroom, into our students, right? Because that's, that's the purpose, right? Is to make sure that our kids have and our teachers have what they need in order to achieve and get better results. So that's the first thing that you do, right? You want to see what you are dealing with. And then begin to see, all right, where are there some efficiencies that we can do, right? Where are some things that we can be looking at that maybe we don't need? You know, how could we use the dollars that we have and currently put them back into the classroom? I think that, you know, we have to look at, you know, there's 100 schools right now that have less than 100 students, right? And that's part of the thing. I think one of the things that I would love for us to be able to look at and do as a school system is to reimagine what we look like as a school system. I think we continually piecemeal, right? In addition, right? We have to go to Springfield. We have to, we have to make friends, right? So, you know, one of the ways that you sell the school district is, you know, the mayor and CPS leadership have to go to Washington, right? And they have to meet with the whole congressional delegation, not just the Democrats, but the Republicans. Got to meet with all those people. You got to meet with all the federal stakeholders. So those who have dollars that they're allocating, that could be allocated to help CPS. And then when you go down to Springfield, you bring with you, you bring yourself key leaders, you bring business, you bring community stakeholders, right? You bring some of our legislative, all their people to come and talk to the folks in Cairo, in East St. Louis, the people out in DuPage, right? So that folks understand that as CPS goes, right? If CPS is strong, that means it's good for everybody, right? Because you have a strong school system that really then helps anchor the state of Illinois and the city of Chicago.
So this is another yes or no question. Do you think this, do you think city council, sorry, sorry, do you think Chicago Public Schools should pick up part of the cost of non-teaching pensions as it has since, oh, sorry, I'm so sorry. Messed up this question again. Do you think the city should pick up part of the cost of non-teaching pensions as it has since 2020? That's about $175 million in pension payments.
I think currently, I would say yes, that the city should pick it up. But again, you know, one of the things that we have to look at is where are we allocating? How are we spending our dollars, right? And making sure that we are living within our means, but also looking for new and creative ways to raise dollars for the schools and, you know, it may be having the big, I think pension and pension debt and liability are much bigger conversations that really require potentially some state action, right? At the legislative level. So that's, this is where I mentioned earlier, right? We have to have, begin to make inroads and friends on both sides, right? Because we're going to need everybody to fully understand kind of our circumstances, right? And the state currently has, right? It's part of it, their pension fund, they cover some of this school district, right? So somehow we need to, we need to really study that and look at what we can do to best, best make those current obligations, but also future, so that our teachers and our retirees can get their pensions when they're eligible.
Yeah. You keep mentioning the state. So I am, I'm going to ask you now a couple of questions about state and how it's a fun CPS school. So yes or no, do you think the state should provide CPS more funding?
I think, again, I want to see what the, how the current allocation is coming, right?
So is that a maybe?
Maybe, yes. Yeah. I think we want before, I think it's very difficult to ask people for more money when you have declining enrollment and an almost $30,000 per student cost, right? So to go to the legislator and to the taxpayer and continually asking them for additional dollars without knowing where current dollars are being spent, right? You know, I'd like to know what that ratio is, you know, of the $10 billion, how much is actually going into the classroom, right? So I think there's some homework to be done. But look, I, I will gladly lead a delegation down to Springfield, down to Washington to begin to have dialogues and conversations, you know, with our state legislators and our congressional delegation.
Yeah, well, speaking on that point, the next question is, how would you go about working with the state and other elected officials to get more funding?
So I think part of, it's very interesting. So I've spent last several years fundraising. And one of the things that you always begin with, you know, if you're embarking on a capital campaign, right? You're doing an analysis and you're doing a needs assessment. And then at the end, the product that you end up with is kind of a plan, right? That you are taking, a case study that you're taking with you as you're trying to gain support and raise money, right? And I think that we would need to do the same for that. And again, I'm not doing this alone, right? I'm bringing people, right? I'm, I'd be like, let's set up a blue ribbon committee that has, again, folks in the community, the nonprofit sector, the corporate sector, some of our elected officials. Let's bring them together. And then as we go down to Springfield, let's have conversations, right? Because it's not only me going down. And I think that our tone has to be different, right? You have to be organized, you know? You can't go down to Springfield and demand. You know, you have to be strategic and not be tactical. I think oftentimes, some of the things that you see play out are more tactics, right? We're going to go down and demand you to give me money versus being very strategic and planful and thoughtful about why we need that money, you know, building the case, right? And I yet to see that, you know? We have to build that case. And I think we can build that case together.
I don't know how sturdy this table is, so it's not too hard. So the next section is about school choice, which is something that has been a conversation over the past year about select enrollments, magnets, and gift programs, all that stuff, right? So yes or no, do you believe any of Chicago Public Schools' admission policies should change?
I would say, I would have to know what those policies are first and foremost. But I think as a part of best practices with any standard operating procedure, right? You're always and should be reviewing your policies and procedures and making sure that the intent of that policy and procedure are being carried out. And maybe they've changed, right? And hence then you'd have to tweak them. So that, that would be my response to that question.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, so moving on to the next question is, this is a little bit long, so bear with me. The Chicago Board of Education has taken steps in the past to end charter school contracts when schools are not performing well or have financial troubles. Are you in favor of ending charter school agreements, which effectively leads to a school closure?
So I mentioned earlier that 31% of our students are at reading level and 19% are in math. So that would be a whole lot of schools, right? Not just charter, but some of our neighborhood schools, right? That's, that's the pot that we're talking. I think that when you're engaging in contract negotiations and you create standard operating agreements with an entity, right? You should see these things coming. And, and on the district side, right? They should never come as a surprise if we're doing what we're supposed to, right? And part of that is monitoring, assessing, you know, making sure that we are doing our due diligence, you know, and not just negotiating contracts, you know, giving them to folks and them like, oh, you're not performing and then we're going to go close you, right? That, that doesn't make sense. But, you know, like with any contract that we have, that we engage in, right? Whether it is for food, for copies, all those things, right? We have to do our due diligence and when contracts are bad, then we make sure that we have the appropriate clauses, right? In them that allow us to get out of them, right? So I would do the same. But I think relative to schools, I think, you know, you can't hold, because charter schools are CPS schools, right? They get paid with the same taxes. And so you can't treat one group of schools differently than you do the other, right? And then you start, you create, you create a real big wedge and difference in terms of what you're doing, especially when we have schools currently that aren't performing as well and we're not doing anything, right? So I would love for a universal monitoring tool, right? To be created on how we evaluate schools on their performance, you know? It could be a metric on not only the academic, financial, facility, extracurricular, community engagement, right? There are tools out there that I think could help the whole system become much better and much more accountable, I think, to the taxpayer.
Okay, so these, this next group of questions is about equity, but I love these questions too because they get us a little bit closer to talking about students in schools. So our first question is, there are some schools in the district that have seen an uptick in English learners that, and some of those schools do not have bilingual teachers or staff to support those students. As a board member, how would you ensure English learners have support and resources in schools?
You know, I think you heard me talk about the third sector, which is the nonprofit sector, right? I think that there are groups out there that are already doing some of this work and they're partnering already with CPS. So you have to continue to do those. You have to work with ISB to figure out on the certification and/or endorsements that folks need, you know, how can we expedite them and, you know, what is it that we need to do? And then the other pieces, I mean, we're, we're in Chicago. I mean, do you know how many schools of education are in our city? Like, that just seems like a real logical connection, right? That maybe we're missing and maybe we're not, right? Something that, again, we need to look at. And then, you know, continue to partner again with a lot of those neighborhood bases, based communities, nonprofits, and, and figure out the best ways to meet those particular needs. But I mean, I think it's one of those things that we're, we're going to continually see, right? Because there is a shortage on both sides, right? So can we offer incentives? Can we, is there a pay differential that we have to look at, right? And those are going to be the things that I think that as a board, we're going to have to look at, right? But, but in the immediate, making sure that we're, that our schools are partnering with the right, appropriate nonprofits that are working on the ground, you know, with parents and with students, but also looking at the academics and the credentialing that's required and see what we can do to help expedite that and bring more teachers and/or paraprofessionals into the classroom to help.
Okay, so this, this next question is about students with disabilities, which is near to me because I do report on these students a lot and I talk to their families quite a bit. And I know, and this question also highlights that Chicago Public Schools have struggled to serve students with disabilities for many years and the pandemic worsened it. With students not getting the support and services they're entitled to legally, one of the acute issues is getting these students to school. Would kids wait in weeks to get bus routes or sometimes the bus routes are very long? As a board member, what would you do to ensure that these students get bus services quickly?
So you know, there's a group out there, CPS parents for buses. And they've come out with some recommendations that I support. One is looking at paratransportation systems. The second is looking at specific legislation for some of the licensers that are required for buses, whether it's a CDL or different classifications. But one of the things that they talk about is there's a hood rule, right? So because people can't lift the hood of a bus open, they would be ineligible, you know, as part of the...
As part of requirements?
Yeah, as part of requirement. So there's a couple of their recommendations that I would do. I think this goes back though to see what other folks are doing, right? There's our, there, we have a transit system, right? Let's have conversations with them. Metro, CTA, RT, right?
Or PACE, yeah.
Yeah, PACE. Let's have a conversation with those groups and tackle these things and see what the for-profit is doing, right? And, and there may even be some nonprofits that are providing similar types of services, right? I mean, we have a region, right? We have a logistical transportation system and hub in our region. Let's figure out how we can fix that problem for our students and to get them to school on time.
Next question is about staffing shortages, which you know is a big thing across the district and we're talking about in some cases, teachers, but we're also talking about those support staffers as well. What policies do you support to recruit more teachers, including teachers of color? And I have thrown this in as well, specifically men of color in cases because there's a lower number of them. And then educators in hard-to-staff fields such as special education?
You know, I think it begins, I think, in our schools, right? You know, making those careers great, right? So we have to market them, right? I have the same conversation with our friends in the union, right? You know, where they also are struggling for pipeline. And so we have to, it's going to sound funny, but right? Teaching is cool, right? And we, and that's one way of looking at it, right? So that we can begin to have kids have great experiences in schools, in our schools, where they have great teachers and they're like, you know what? I could do this. I would really love to be able to do this, right? And then partner again with those schools, right? We have all these institutions just in Illinois. I mean, even in our, just Chicago, in our own backyard. Let's start to partner and connect the dots, right? Within the work that we're doing. I think that's one way of doing it. And tapping into other programs, right? There's others, programs that are on the university level that are attracting different kids, kids, kids of color, bilingual, you know, men to enroll in these particular professions. So I think there, that's one way of the recruitment process, to be able to do that with them.
So it's a little bit of like...
A combination of a lot of different things. It really is. I think there's not a one fits all model, right? There is a lot of, there's so many options for people, right? To do, to go into careers. And I think that, you know, getting strong role models and strong professionals, teachers in front of our kids, that they see them constantly, right? Just becomes kind of that norm, like, oh, what do I want to do? Oh, maybe I do want to be a teacher. Oh, maybe I want to be an accountant. Maybe I want to be an electrician, right? That's the way you kind of do that, right? And, and, and those professions then also have to make those jobs, you know, what are the things that you're learning? What are the skills that you're bringing, right? And in terms of being able to manage a classroom, right? You know, there's much more than just teaching, right? In the classroom that happens on a daily basis.
So this section of question is about facilities and infrastructure.
Sure.
So the district, as you mentioned earlier too, you mentioned this earlier, was the district has seen modest enrollment increases, increases in the last couple of years, but overall, the number of students remains lower than it was a decade ago. Some schools serve a fraction of the students they once did, making it hard to provide a wide range of programs and support. How should CPS balance its current enrollment with the hundreds of buildings the district operates?
Wow.
That's a big question, I'm sorry. Take your time.
It is. You know, if you look at the maintenance of those buildings, right? I think there is, I don't know, $14 billion in projects and then there's like $3 billion in actual deferred maintenance, right? And so I think we have to reimagine what the school system looks like. And I know that, and that means looking at everything, putting everything on the table, you know? The fact that a school that has 35 kids, that once served 1,600 schools still open and that building's still being used, that, that's, that's an example. And so we have to figure out ways to bring more students to those schools, but also look at and kind of prioritize what buildings are, you know, past their use of life, right? And, and figure out what you're going to do. Where are there critical capital investments that we have to make at schools that have population, right? Looking for ways to engage the community, you know? I often say this, if downtown found money to redo commercial space in the loop for apartments, we could find money to help repurpose some of these schools that don't have enough students, right? And maybe, maybe it doesn't become a school. So imagine a school like Manley, I'm going to pick on Manley, because it's a big school and it has underutilization. Imagine if that became a trade school. So during the day, it served students and then at night, it served the community. Wouldn't that be a win-win? That would be a win-win in the city, in a neighborhood that needs that, right? It would, it would meet the demands of labor, right? That is dying to have people enrolled in the trades, right? And so that's what I'm talking about. I think that we have to really take a step back, right? I think oftentimes, we, we say no, no, no to things, right? And I think we, we're at, we're at a point where we have to reimagine. If you think of Chicago City Colleges, from the day that Juan Salgado took it over and the vision that he and then Mayor Ron Emanuel set, and where they are now, that's visionary, right? Each of the schools is their own school, right? The school of business. You have health sciences, you have light manufacturing, you have transportation logistics, right? And, and it's, they're hubs, right? For, and they're producing into our economic system, right? Into job places. So imagine that we are able to do that with our school system, right? Begin to have pipeline into different pathways of work, into different pathways for academics, for school, right? Some kids are going to go to college and we're going to want them to go to college, right? Some people, some are going to go to the trades, some are going to go work in some other venue and avenue. So, so I think that we need to look at those. And one of the ways that we can, right? There's TIF dollars, right? That maybe we have to look at to bring forth to that table and, and do those things, right? And, and figure out different types of lease arrangements with other nonprofits, with other types of schools that maybe are expanding or not expanding.
So would it be fair to say that, especially, I think I should preference this with Sam, like, the last round of school closures we saw in 2018 was about this issue of underutilizing buildings. And that is why, you know, the last few remaining high schools in Inglewood closed and they opened Inglewood STEM High School to, you know, merge all those schools together and bring those students together. and bring those students together into one school building. Would it be fair to say that in some cases, you would be against school closures if you could repurpose the school for some?
Yeah, you have to, right? I think that's what happened in the last time, right? That you have buildings that are still empty, right? And so part of creating, in my world, I envision a blue ribbon committee where you have community engaged, right? From the corporate, from the neighborhood, from the schools, from the legislature, right? Folks involved and engaged in a process that really helps transform our school system, right? With the intent of repurposing those schools, right? And some schools may not be schools. They may become community centers, right? But we can't have schools that we own on the books, right? That we're still paying for light and heat, right? Because the last thing we want is for pipes to burst, right? All those types of things. So I mean, we just have to do better, I think. And the ability for us to look at that and assess it, right? And then create a plan. And then I think really, it starts to free up some money, right? I think we have a lot of dollars in space cost, right? And those dollars should be where? In the classroom, for our teachers and our kids.
And so something that's coming up in our conversation is there's, which we talked about the operating budget, which is the spending plan for the district. But we're also kind of hitting at the capital plan a little bit, which is supposed to tell us like what's going on and what repairs we need in buildings. So anyways, the capital planning has been criticized in the past for being inequitable and lacking a true system for prioritizing which schools get repairs. It's also expensive for CPS to fund these repairs because of the school district's junk bond state status. How would you approach capital repairs and improvements as CPS buildings?
So I think you have to, I alluded to it earlier, right? You create a priority determinant system, right? In terms of, you know, one, two, three, four, five, whatever the scale system you want to use. And that's how you begin to fix some of these problems. What ends up happening is when you don't fix something that will cost you, I don't know, half a million dollars today and you punt it down the road for three years. I mean, that incremental cost is going to go up, right? Because the cost of goods and services has gone up. And so we have to really prioritize that though. But then have a serious conversation with city council about, you know, what is it that we're doing with the dollars in some of these TIF districts that are just sitting there, right? And how do we repurpose them to help with some of those repairs, right? And then the other piece that the board has to make sure is to make sure that the allocation that we're supposed to be getting, that we're getting, right, from those dollars as well. So there's a combination of the two, right? And I think in a system as big as ours, we have to be able to say, okay, if there are these dollars here, how can we, how can we, how can we keep to the intent of the purpose of the TIF? And improve our schools? And I think you can do both.
And we're getting closer to the end here, actually. Like, I got one more question for you. No, actually, two, two more questions for you, I'm sorry. So one question that I have asked some of the candidates is about chronic absenteeism. So we know that this is up across Chicago Public Schools. And that what it means is that students are not showing up to class for about 10% of the school year. So they're missing about 18 to 20 days of school. Now, some of those students might have like a, you know, an excuse. And sometimes they might not have an excuse for that. But what we do know is they're not in the classroom. What are some initiatives you would support to help get students back into school?
So you know, let's think of a school. And when you walk into a school, what's the intentional culture that the school, when you walk through the doors? Is there an intentional culture, right? As you walk in, is there teaching and learning happening everywhere, right? Three, do students have choices for classes that they may want to be able to do? You know, I think in this current rendition, right? Where CPS is trying to limit the number of choices, right? Because their focus is primarily on just neighborhood schools, right? And maybe kids, there's students who are gifted and they need to be challenged, right? So you may have to bring in honors and AP classes. You have to be able to figure those things. And then third, fourth, in schools that need additional services, right? So some of these schools that have this chronic absenteeism are probably in areas that need additional services. And again, how do we partner with the third sector, the nonprofits, who are doing that work, who are on the front lines, day in and day out, working with families, working with students? And how do we begin, again, to establish these partnerships with them, right? And then, once we establish those partnerships and we have a good program that we'd like to scale, let's go talk to the philanthropic community, right? To see how they can help support our students within CPS.
Makes sense. So now we're wrapping up. We have a fun question, I have a fun question, I promise.
A fun question, I like fun questions.
Okay, so what's your favorite memory from school?
Oh, man. My favorite memories of school? I would say, you know, one, the friendships that I've made and have kept, you know, for, man, it'd be 35 years since I graduated high school.
Oh, don't say that. Don't say that.
Yeah, I said it out loud, 35 years. One of the, so that, those relationships that you build, right? With people from all walks of life, right? The teachers who helped mold you, right? Who helped, helped a student like me think about the world a little differently, right? That I could walk in to school and they say, welcome to the dream factory. Do you know how powerful that is? Welcome to the dream factory, where you can be anything that you want to be. It's pretty powerful for a kid. And so those are things that, and you know, the teachers who poured into me, right? You know, because they're part of that community, right? The other staff in the building who made sure, you know, you were on the right path, you know, and you weren't screwing around and getting yourself in trouble. So those are the things, my memories of the school. You know, aside from playing sports and being involved in student government and those types of things, right? That ability to learn. And I think, if anything, right? That's where I learned and my passion for helping others began, right? Was in school, right? You know, and trying to help those who need help, you know, from that perspective.
Do you have any, like, teachers or staff member from school that?
Oh, yeah, a lot of them. Yeah, I do. Man, I could probably name one from everything. Ms. Soren, who I had for two years in grammar school, just always kept us on, you know, and made sure that, you know, if, you know, there's teachers who see potential in you, right? And so if, and they see when you're strained. And she just had a knack of always calling my dad. And my dad would, he and I would have a conversation. That's all I'll say, right? We'd have a conversation. In high school, you know, I had a great number of professors, you know, who helped, you know, encouraged me to, you know, take honors classes and always were challenging me academically, right? You know, you can do better, you can do more, you can do this. And then, you know, when I think of, when I was at Loyola, my love for political science, you know, Dr. John Pulisero, you know, just wonderful. And then, you know, when I went out to get my masters, you know, you know, my budget teachers, right? You know, who, and policy teachers, you know, that really helped challenge and give perspective and tools so that as I engaged and embarked in my career, I could go out and make change.
Well, that was the last two questions I have for you, I promise. So just to close this out, thank you so much, Angel Gutierrez, for joining us today. We appreciate you taking the time to be here. I should have said this at the top, that Felix was invited to come and join us, but he was unable to make it today. Thank you to everybody who is tuning in to watch these school board candidate forums to learn more about the people running Chicago Historic School Board elections. You can find our voter guides and additional resources at chicago.org/chicago. Thank you again to our partners at Block Club Chicago, WBZ, and The Chicago Sun-Times for working with us to develop the voter guides. Special thanks to Tiana Van Gundy at Field Events for planning and hosting these forums. And to BMP Film for video and audio production. Special shout out to our engagement team and my colleagues at Chalk Beach Chicago. Our managing editors are Eric Gorski, Carrie Milago, and our editor in chief is Sarah Darville. For Chalk Beach Chicago, I'm Samantha Smiley. Have a great day and happy voting.